I'd like to call the Peoria Public Schools District 150 Board of Education meeting for March 23rd, 2015 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just as a reminder, at seven o'clock tonight, we do have a public hearing on the reduction in force, so whatever we're doing at that point, we will stop and do our hearing and then we will resume.
Yes, thank you, appreciate it.
Are there any announcements from board members tonight? Mr. Crawford?
I would like to welcome Chris Reynolds to the Hilltop. I think that is a great hire on the part of Bradley. He's a Peoria High alum, so I would like to welcome Chris Reynolds to the Hilltop, for those who didn't hear that. Peoria High alum, and I think it's a great addition to the Bradley family.
Thank you. Mr. Bateman?
Yeah, just wanted to thank Dr. Lathan for the opportunity to sit in on the ULT quarterly meetings. There was a very good free-flowing of conversation between the teachers present from the ULT, representatives from all the schools, and very open, very candid conversations. So it was very refreshing to see and was glad to be able to be a part of that.
Thank you.
Just want to recognize the Woodruff Culinary Arts students. They've been providing catering services for our engineered to be the best program that's for our middle school students, once a month on Saturdays. And then at the end of the school year, we'll recognize those students as well as the culinary arts students. But just a very special thank you to Woodruff and the Culinary Arts Program.
Anyone else? Okay, let's go ahead and do the approval of minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 19th and March 14th, 2015?
Sumo.
Second.
Should you call the roll?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. I'd like to ask the board, what's your pleasure? The public hearing doesn't start until seven, so do you want to, I'm sure that the budget update's going to take longer than 25 minutes, or I'm sure. So do you want to go on with the information items? Do you want to do the presentation by audience earlier, or what's your pleasure?
I would be presentation by audience.
Okay, okay-dokey. We're now at audience opportunity to address the board. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Education held in public, not a public meeting. It is not a question and answer session, and it is not a debate, so there will be no response from the horseshoe unless one of us has comments. Once the audience comments are completed, recognizing everyone's First Amendment rights, we still ask that you refrain from speaking about subjects or topics relating directly to district personnel and also those not germane to the Board of Education's authority. We also ask that you refrain from using inappropriate language and keep a civil tone to your remarks. Please also keep in mind that just because something can be said does not necessarily mean that it should be said. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and give your name for the record. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. No one under 18 years of age may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or a teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Board members are also available by phone and/or email. This contact information is available on the district website and in the school calendars that parents receive from their school. We are still without a little buzzer tonight, so when the three minutes is up, Mrs. Bastian will let me know and we'll just try to politely interrupt your comments. And also, if it takes long, pardon me, she's got, oh, okay. And also, if we reach seven o'clock, we will suspend audience presentations until after the public hearing. Savino Sierra.
Savino Sierra, South Side of Peoria. I just want to say that we need a change in 150, you know. I think we're going to get it. I hope we're going to get it. And it's a, you people sitting up there haven't done a very good job of directing our district, you know. You're spending a lot of our money, and that's uncalled for. And it's time this ceases. You know, we're talking about all the deficit we got in this district, but you don't try to contain it. And so I'm just telling you, you people, your time is coming up, and you're going to have to leave. So I'm a little tired tonight, so I'm not going to say too much. But I just wish the people that are running for office, good luck and that they do a better job than what we've been getting. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to have Mr. Copeland check that microphone. I'm not sure it was on. Okay. Sharon Cruz?
You have my compilations of the Lincoln Resource Officer's daily logs for October through February. If you look at the data without your blinders on, you have to conclude that he was overworked. One resource officer is not enough for a school with a difficult environment of 872 students, larger than manual's enrollment. This officer was injured in his efforts to break up a fight. He has since asked for and received a transfer. Has anything been done to improve the situation for the officer now assigned to an unchanged environment? You are spending money on unproven programs and scrimping on money that should be spent to create safe learning environments. You may fool yourselves or the public, but resource officers know the truth about the level of discipline problems in schools. I have also given you a handout of expenditures about which you should have asked questions publicly before approving them. Mr. Cloy did break the pattern recently by asking about the $900,000 to be approved for buses. That was admirable, but I believe it was already a done deal. In March 2014, you approved the purchase of kitchen equipment, including hot food service counters for Franklin, Lindberg, Jamison, Whittier, Keller, and Von Steuben for over $108,000. Four of these counters cost over $13,000, but Franklin's cost over $27,000. Why are West Franklin's double the cost of the others? This school year, kitchen equipment has been purchased for TruWin, Heinz, Woodruff, Northmore, Keller, Roosevelt, Von Steuben, Whittier, Woodrow, Harrison, and Charter Oak at a total cost of almost $110,000. At eight schools, the cost ranges from $3,000 to $5,000. However, the cost at Charter Oak was $48,200, over $43,000 more than at each of the eight schools. Can you explain that? Will you explain it? Probably not. Was, why is there suddenly a need for kitchen equipment at the schools? Who initiated these purchases, and when did you learn about them? Can I assume that the equipment was not put out for bid? A total of $84,000 was spent at a company labeled as Johnson, half spent on January 26th, half spent on February 23rd, release the agenda. But putting out bids seems to be, not putting out bids, seems to be illegal, unethical, and unfair. Don't you have the legal obligation to seek out competitive prices? As a never-ending gift to the Follett Company, you have paid over $32,000 for license fees for the barcoding system. From what I hear, the barcodes have not survived student wear and tear. Also, I believe students are not paying for lost books. This system is costing, not saving, district money. And you are no longer saying the district is operating in the black. Thank you.
Terry Knapp?
Yes, Terry Knapp, and I'd like to echo Mr. Crawford's comments about Bradley hiring Chris Reynolds as the athletic director. Local hire, great thing. I was at the reception that he was given. Tremendous outpouring from the community. This is a great thing. You know, I think Dr. Glasser is on her way out. Hopefully, they can find somebody locally, even if it's Mr. LaHood to take her position. We need people in this community that are vested in the community, that don't come in and say the company, the community is dysfunctional. That's a negative way to start out, and it only breeds contempt. I'd like to say that I was in canvassing neighborhoods the last two weekends for the school board election. Spent six hours, two weeks ago on the weekend, Saturday and Sunday, and two, six hours this weekend, and talked to many, many people. I had at the 85th precinct, I think that's the High Point area, out in that area. And I can say honestly, without exception, 90% of the people in that neighborhood that I talked to want a change in direction in this school district. They want a new superintendent. And if you don't think that that's true, you need to go out and canvas. Talk to the people, the voters, the ones that's home values are going down because our schools are sitting at the bottom of the state instead of somewhere in the middle or at the top of the state. It's ridiculous. I also had a chance to go to Peoria Players and see Pirates of Penzance with Lee Winger starring. Chris Winger, who's the music director now in Dunlap, because he left Charter Oak because of the riff. He's successful out there. Kaitlin Winger was in it as a principal singer. Denise Adams-Winger, who was one of our teachers here, was the pianist. And of course, Matt Adams-Winger is in the opera in St. Louis. These people are part of this community, and Lee Winger is still banned from our school district, still banned from our grounds by our superintendent. One of the first things she did was ban this gentleman for life. It's sad to go and watch that type of performance by those people in this community that have a vested interest in this community when the man has been banned by the district for life. I don't, I still don't understand that, and you need to change that. I was looking at your list. I see Ms. Brown, the principal at Lincoln, is resigning. Oh, heavens forbid. You know, somebody from North Carolina can't handle the work at Lincoln with 850 kids and a zoo atmosphere? Please, one security guard down there to handle it, basically as Ms. Cruz said, in the seventh and eighth grade hall while tyranny exists throughout the building. It's crazy to me. You need to do something about it. Thank you.
Jeff Atkins-Dutrow?
Good evening. Jeff Atkins-Dutrow, President of the Peoria Federation of Teachers. It's come to my attention that Dr. Bill Collier will be stepping down as the mayor's longtime education liaison. Dr. Collier was a winner of our union's 2014 Partners in Education Award. He's worked hard to ensure our union has a seat at the table with our city stakeholders. He included us in the Pathways to Prosperity Project. And he worked with the mayor to ensure that our Teachers of the Month are honored at a city council meeting in May. I know the city has worked hard to try to build bridges between our district and the city. I thought some of you might have some comments regarding Dr. Collier, the mayor, and the city council members who have worked with our district. I'm also curious as to whether or not the crisis or disaster plan has been developed yet. We had the incident at Harrison School. Don't forget, though, that we also had employees lose their homes in the tornadoes that struck in Washington and Pekin. It became evident that there were no provisions, either in district policy or our CBAs, for disaster relief. We had teachers en masse really offering sick days to teachers who had lost everything in the tornado, and the district would not allow it. We had at least one of our members lose her home, everything gone, and ended up losing wages as well. If you would like to include us in the crisis or disaster plan, we would greatly appreciate it. Also curious to know if any of the board members have looked into Senate Bill One, the new school refinancing bill that has been introduced. We are in the process of doing so. Giving our, excuse me, given our budget situation, it might be who of us to work together to advocate for a system of refinancing that our district would benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any board members have any response or comments to the audience comments tonight? Mr. Cloy?
Yes, a question about Mr. Winger's status? In terms of him being restricted from being on district property?
We shouldn't discuss citizens publicly. That's considered a confidential matter.
Okay, thank you. In terms of Mr. Collier's involvement, I've spent a good deal of time with him on a number of issues. Appreciate his contribution. I know that that's a difficult job, and it really doesn't pay anything, so it's not a job. It's a volunteer position. And I appreciate the effort he's made, and I think when we worked on Pathways to Prosperity and putting a number of people into that organization, he was very helpful with that. And I appreciate that, and I hope the board realizes that that was an opportunity to do some things that really enhance our working with many other parties in the community that have a stake in what we do here. So with that, thank you.
Anyone else? Let's move on to information items. Still got a few minutes before the hearing starts. Item one is the first reading of Board Policy 7:190, Prohibited Student Conduct. Did you want to speak to this, or does the policy committee, or both?
I think we could, we could talk to this briefly. Let me get my notes here. And this caustic, Mr. Redbird, could obviously add to this conversation as well. What we have, and bear with me while I bring that back up, because it's shut down. There really are two policies involved, 7-180 and 7-190. And we're required every two years to revise our policy on bullying. So we are in the process of evaluating and trying to adopt language that is consistent with the new state statute, which I believe was passed last August or last July, if that's correct.
There were, there were two statutes, actually. One of them was effective at the beginning of, was in July of 2014, and the other at the beginning of this year. And the policy specifies in minute detail, the law requires in minute detail a policy to be enacted by school boards with about four pages of requirements. So they essentially, you know, wrote a long and lengthy, almost administrative procedure into the statute. So we looked at, we looked at two different models in the policy committee for Policy 7-180, which is, which is a new policy. So we looked at the model that the Association of School Boards' press service has written. It's, at least in my opinion, it's not much better than the statute, which I don't think is very well-written. Our outside attorneys, Hodges-Louisey, have written a, another version of proposed Policy 7-180, which is in your packet. And I think that it, it's a, it's a better alternative to the School Board Association's version. It's simply more readable. But overall, the, the new legislation places a significant responsibility to the board with respect to the prevention of bullying and documentation of bullying when it occurs. And there are significant documentation requirements for all of that. So that's basically the major changes in the policy. Well, again, it's a new policy. 7-190 is our current student discipline policy, and that's also in your board packet. And the version that you have here is the IASB press update of that, of that policy. So the items listed in red are the changes that Press is making to that policy.
Can someone give us a little summary of what the changes are in that policy?
In the student discipline policy?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, no, it's okay. If you take a look at the document that's, that's there, anything in red is additional text that's been added to this.
Okay, could you give a sort of a synopsis, because obviously, the public doesn't have that in front of them.
Right. Okay, well, for example, it talks about possession, distribution, purchasing, selling, and/or under the influence of alcoholic beverages, and the fact that they, students who are under the influence are not permitted to attend school or school functions, and are treated as though they had alcohol in their possession. Another one deals with changing the description of who can administer a, items that are prescribed to a student, which includes the addition of a licensed practitioner, in addition to a physician, which is consistent, I believe, with the statute.
Yes.
Also, it adds any performance-enhancing substance that's currently on the IHSA's banned list, banned list, so that it could be, unless it's administered in accordance with a physician or a licensed practitioner. There's also discussion of the use or possession and the prohibition of on-campus of medical cannabis, even by a student for whom medical cannabis has been prescribed. And then any inhalant regarded as, whether it contains an illegal drug or controlled substance, is also banned. And then the dispensing or selling of otherwise-distributing non-prescription medication, so that in effect, if a student is distributing or selling over-the-counter medications, they are in effect not allowed to do so on campus. Those are the major changes in it, and it really only applies to the first page of that document. If I could go on then to the other document, which is 7-190.
Before you go on from that one, the only thing I have concern with, and that goes to the very last point about sale and distribution. I've heard students talking before, and one asked a teacher for Tylenol or something like that, and they said, you know, I can't distribute that to you. But they follow up with the comment of, talk to your peers. They probably have it in their, you know, a lot of them have it in their purse or something like that. We probably need to tighten up on some instructions to teachers as much as that does, you know, you got to take this into context, especially in high school. I really get it at the primary levels and even early middle school, but a lot of your high schools, especially, for lack of good terms, a lot of your females are going through their cycle. And the need for Midol or something like that is readily, readily needed to help them get through a day. Soldier, or soldiers, excuse me, athletes as well, after a weekend may need Ibuprofen or things like that to deal with bruising or pain that they incurred from, from the weekend. I'm just a little concerned that, that we at least apply some common sense to this as it applies to general need and use of students as they have stuff for their own consumption.
Those are issues that we took a look at, and if the language reads specifically dispensing, selling, or otherwise distributing non-prescription medication, it does not address the possession or use for your own consumption. Now, there are some school districts that had, does it?
No, no.
There are some school districts which in effect say you cannot even have those on your, on your person or your locker, and that we did not go there. So there have also been instances where products that are over the counter have been represented as something else and sold. And this is to address part of that issue. So.
We need to be sure that students understand, because I'm sure every day you have someone look at a classmate and say, hey, have you got a couple of Tylenol you could give me?
Right.
And if, and technically, it sounds to me like they're violating this policy if they hand them to Tylenol.
And you're right. And the issue there is, where do you draw the line? And you have to look at it and say, well, that might be a good thing to do for a friend, and you feel like you're trying to be helpful to them, but at the same time, you have no idea if they have an intolerance for that, if you actually are handing them what you thought you were handing them. There's many other issues there that you, you don't understand. And, and I know that it sounds strict, but at the same time, it creates a situation in a school where we really have no way to, to address that, other than to say something like this. There are much more strict ways to say this, and we did not go there.
And I understand that, but like I said, we, we've got to make sure we educate the kids, because they're used to being able to do that, Ms. Ross.
Go ahead, please.
I want to dovetail on what you said. Common practice may be what's going on. How has that changed from what's going on now, the new policy?
Well, at this point, I can't turn around and hand it to my friend here and say, here, take these.
But the old policy didn't address non-prescription.
It did not address non-prescription.
But let me tell you that the common But let me tell you, that, that the common practice, in my experience, is that if I'm a student and I have Motrin or whatever it is in my purse, and I take a couple, I'm in trouble, if I'm, if I'm caught. Myself, if I'm doing, that's, that's the common practice.
Well...
I've had too many parents say...
That's, that's not in our policy that I know of.
And, and also, you know, as we look at discipline and what young people were disciplined for, that comes up a lot.
I don't, I don't know where that's coming from, because it's...
There's some real education around this.
That's, that's an issue of, of education and knowledge and some professional development training. The other issue is, we wanted to get this addressed, because we want to get it into any of the documents that are distributed for the new class session, starting in the fall.
They do, because a parent called me, who had a, a child in high school, and she had given this child basically a couple of Motrins to take or during this period of time. And the, the young lady was caught taking the pills, and someone, you know, some, another student told that she was taking a pill, and she got in trouble. So, if it's not in the policy, then that needs to, the policy needs to be really clarified to all of our staff, so that they know, you know, what to look for.
This, this does not address consumption for your own use, if it's your own medication. So...
Well, it sounds like we may need to have some staff re-educated, as, since it, since there are new things in the policy, this is a good opportunity to address all of those things.
It's, this is difficult to do without either going way overboard or, or having nothing. There's a, there's a very gray area here to deal with.
Mr. Crawford?
While there are a number of things that are listed as prohibited student conduct, isn't the policy itself somewhat discretionary in saying that they're, they are authorized to, to exercise discipline? It's not shall authorize, or, or something to that effect. I mean, I think to your point, it's, it, it does allow for some discretion on the part of those authorized to administer discipline.
Yeah, the only, my biggest concern really comes in the, when a student asks more of a teacher, "Hey, do you have something like that?", and the teacher says, "You know, I can't give that," and then directs them to talk to a peer. At that point, they've just inadvertently, the teacher has advised a student to break this policy.
Well, that, as of today, it is not a policy until...
Right, but I'm saying as we move forward.
As we move forward. And this is here on first reading for discussion, and it would be adopted the next, at the next meeting if there's no other edits. That's why it's for your review.
Okay.
Could, could we move on to the second one then?
Well, we're gonna stop now.
Okay. We'll take up that as...
We'll come back to this, that's where we'll start again. Okay, we're at the point for the public hearing on the honorable dismissal of staff. This is a public hearing of the Board of Education of Peoria Public Schools, District Number 150, held pursuant to Section 2412 of the Illinois School Code. The Illinois School Code requires the Board to hold such a hearing when it is considering honorably dismissing a certain number of teachers. Before the beginning of the hearing, I would like to first review the procedures that we will follow tonight. First, the General Counsel for the Board of Education will give a statement discussing the proposed honorable dismissal of 54 of the district's full-time and part-time teachers. Second, the district's Chief Financial Officer will give a brief statement concerning the economic need for the proposed reduction. After the district's General Counsel and Chief Financial Officer give their statements, the Board will listen to comments from any interested parties. Interested parties to this hearing include any teacher that will be affected by the proposed action and the teachers' union. Following comments by any interested party, members of the public may comment. Comments from interested parties and members of the public shall be limited to the proposed teacher reductions in force. Comments on any other issue would be held until the public comment portion of the regular meeting, which we've already had for tonight. As always for this hearing, speaking time will be limited to two minutes per individual. After the public and interested parties have completed their comments, the hearing will be adjourned. Any Board action will be taken at a later time during the Board's regular meeting. Okay, okay. Before we start the comments, I'm gonna ask for a motion and a second to open the hearing, and we'll have the comments as part of the hearing.
Some move.
Sit.
Would you call the roll?
Mr. Rayton?
Aye.
Ms. Ross?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. At this point, I will now ask our General Counsel, Nina Gugis, to begin the hearing with a statement regarding the proposed honorable dismissals.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, President Wolfmeier. As outlined in the public notification document, the Board is taking action tonight to honorably dismiss 54 teachers from their employment with the district. As Mr. Wilcoxon can explain more fully, the honorable dismissal of these teachers is based upon the need to decrease the number of teachers employed by the Board due to economic necessity. I want to stress that because the reason for these dismissals is the financial condition of the district, the dismissals are honorable dismissals. First, it is important to understand that the law dictates that all school districts reduce staff now for the next school year, when in fact, the district will not receive information regarding state funding until July or August. With respect to the necessity for this hearing, within the last several years, there has been a change in the law that requires both non-tenured and tenured teachers to be given honorable dismissals. Previously, only tenured teachers received honorable dismissals. As a result, we have honorably dismissed more teachers in the past few years, even though the total number dismissed is equal to or less than previous years. Therefore, we are required to hold this hearing because under the law, we are honorably dismissing more than 150% of the average number of, of teachers honorably dismissed in the preceding three years. Still, it is important to note that the number of honorable dismissals this year is far less than that last year. Specifically, 66 teachers were honorably dismissed last year versus 54 this year. Again, in closing, let me reiterate that these 54 teachers are being honorably dismissed due to the district's need to decrease the number of teachers for economic necessity. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Wilcoxon, will you give a statement concerning the economic need for the proposed reduction?
In a few minutes, the Board will see, receive an overview of the district's finances and preliminary recommendations for fiscal 2016 budget. In that presentation, the Board will see that the district's financial position dictates that budget reductions are necessary to not only balance the budget, but to assure that the district has cash on hand to pay bills next spring. For several years, our local property tax revenues, our largest funding source, have declined. General state aid, our second-largest revenue source, continues to be prorated to the point where cumulatively, we have lost 18.7 million that we should have received. Most of that loss has been in the last four years. Given the challenge the state is facing, it is only hopeful that a significant new state funding will come to the district to address our budget needs. In the current fiscal year, we are spending 9.9 million more in the education fund than we'll receive in revenue. In addition, officials in Springfield are now actively talking about cutting between 1 and 2 million in state funding this year. This late in the fiscal year, we can't make expenditure adjustments, so the state funding cut will only add to our fiscal deficit. Our budget presentation will outline $9.1 million in recommended programmatic and staffing budget cuts. Even with these recommended expenditure reductions, the cuts are not enough to fully balance the budget. Given the current deficit and the likely scenario that the district funding will not increase, it is economically necessary to reduce staffing as outlined in the Board action report tonight.
Thank you. We'll now open the meeting to comments from interested parties, including any teachers who will be affected, as well as representatives of the teachers' union.
Hello again, Jeff Atkins-Dutrow, President of the Peoria Federation of Teachers. The district has had 35 to 40 unfilled teaching positions all year long, positions the district could not fill, even with long-term substitutes. We've signed an agreement allowing the district to temporarily outsource psychology services, because we don't have enough psychologists. We've had teachers transferred from critical support positions to classroom positions, because schools, due to a lack of personnel, in your administration's own words, are unstable. What we have is a teacher shortage, and here again, you lay off teachers. Several of those teachers will be compelled to find different jobs. Then, when it comes time to recall the teachers, there won't be enough teachers to fill the positions. Next year, instead of 40 unfilled positions, we'll have 50 or 60. Teacher retention rate, 76.7%, compared to the state average, 85.7%. If we continue the layoff cycle, same thing every year, amid the shortage, our percentage is only going to get worse. And of course, I know, you'll say the budget is bad and cuts must be made, but I do want to ask, what kind of out-of-the-box thinking has been done with regards to our budget? Or are we gonna simply sit back and be victims? And as you look at the big picture, look at the open spots that haven't been filled, look at the failure to retain teachers after these annual layoffs, look at the fact that if you are going to take a financial risk on anything, it should be on keeping your teachers, so we're gonna end up with a short staff, unstable schools again next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other interested parties, teachers who will be affected, or that want to speak? Okay, now we'll, we'll now open the hearing to comments from members of the public. Please remember that comments made during this hearing must be limited to the proposed teacher reduction in force. Speaking time is limited to two minutes per individual.
Yes, Terry Nap. Noticeably on this list, the absence of administrators, are, are you kidding me? I mean, are administrators not part of this failing budget, and should they not be on this list? I think the Board of Education should see to it that a certain number of administrators are on this list. We should all serve the punishment, I guess one should say. Also on this list, and, and, correct me if I'm not wrong, 174 of these positions will not be rehired, period. These people are out of work for 2015 and 16. That's what it says. 174 people gone for the duration, a whole year. Layoff, massive. We've suffered through this year, 35 to 40 teachers short. That's almost two in a building. Is there any wonder why our test scores are dropping without the full complement of teachers needed to man these schools, when we're doing it with substitutes? I suggest you make your administrators sub. Go out into schools and see how long they last, number one, and defer and save money by having the administrators that sit out here on Wisconsin Avenue and supposedly are the educational leaders, and don't even participate in the educational program, if you will. I think it's important and imperative that you do something about this and curb the nasty spending in this district that's just throwing money down the drain while the teachers take the brunt of it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak to the reduction in force? I need a motion and a second to close the hearing.
Some move.
Would you call the roll?
Mr. Rayton?
Aye.
Ms. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I, I will have some questions and comments about the reduction in force when we, after the budget presentation. I think that will also address some of the comments made about administrators and that kind of thing. So, at that time, I'm sure all Board members, or some Board members, will have some things to say. Okay, let's get back to where we were, Mr. Floyd. Remind me where we were.
We were, we were dealing with the policy issue, and I believe it was Number 180, which was the, regarding bullying, and then we were dealing with 190, which was the student conduct, which was the issue with prescriptions and other substances. I'm trying to get back here, well, just bear with me when it gets back to that page. This is the difficulty of trying to find stuff on an iPad with 150 pages of documents sitting here. Okay, so, the, the issue on the, come on, open up. So, this is 7-180, and the draft that you see in front of you on this document, and for those that can't see it, but it's a marked-up version, which shows the differences. And I believe our law firm did this as a matter of work for a number of school districts, and not, it was not done specifically at our request. We're basically getting the benefit of having them, them having done it before, as I understand. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, what you have here is a policy which runs six pages, and there's some footnotes in it. And frankly, as a policy document, it, it really includes both the policy and the administrative procedure. And, and that is an awkward way to do it, but it seems to be, under the circumstances, the best way at this time. So, we're presenting this as a first reading, and we would expect there'd be some comments and thought as you look back at it and read the comments that were, the reasons for the edits and the footnotes, and there are extensive footnotes with this. This does not mean that if we adopt it next meeting, we could not go back and make revisions to it, simply based on our ability to either execute it or find that there are certain things that are not suitable for the way we do business. We have a deadline, I believe, that this has to be adopt, a policy has to be adopted by the 15th of April, which means we have one meeting left in which to do that, which is why we brought it to this meeting as a first reading, and then next time, we'll have it in final form. But obviously, we'd want some input and comments, and we're, the Policy Committee is intending to meet before the next Board meeting, so that if there's any of those edits, we can incorporate them and get them back to you in a document that you can work with. Ms. Kostic, would you care to anything to that? I know we've spent a number of hours on this, and it's, this is not a, a nice, neat topic to deal with. There's just a lot of complexity to it.
I lost my procedures. With the, the Policy Committee, when, when we were reviewing all of this information, we tried to, excuse me, take a look at just about every instance that could occur, and come up with a document that is a viable document that would cover us in all aspects. We value your questions, because, you know, of course, we're human and we can't think of everything, but we have to have something in place, because of the fact that right now, everyone isn't doing the same thing. And so, we need a policy that is in place, that states, "This is the, this is the policy, and this is what you do." One of the things on, in here is, let me find it here. In 7-180, I guess, one of the major things that we had to look at is what was considered as, as bullying. And it's all in the eyes of the beholder, and we believe that that is how it was being handled in the various buildings. So, again, like I said, we, we took a lot of time, we've been discussing this for about two months now?
At least, maybe.
At least two months, trying to come up with a viable document that covered us in all areas.
If I, if I could sort of hit the highlights of this, would that, would that be helpful to you briefly?
Do you want to ask your question first, or do you want to let him?
You gonna do highlights in the...
Let me try and summarize some of those.
Okay, because maybe, maybe the, in the highlights, my question would be answered.
It, it provides a more detailed description of bullying. It also deals with the use of computers and cyberbullying, whether or not they are on school property, which is an extension of this beyond the original scope of what the policy was, and I believe that was new in the legislation, so that was a new state law. It also deals with a very detailed description of cyberbullying and restorative measures. And it also, there is a substantial amount of paperwork required to document cases in terms of what the complaint was, what the investigation was, and then what restorative measures were taken. So that this, this has a significant administrative... So that this, this has a significant administrative burden, which is mandated by the state legislature, who did so in their writing of the law. It also gets into some details about the fact that no student will be punished for reporting of bullying or supplying information, even if the investigation concludes no bullying occurred. There needs to be a response plan, and it, the fact that we also are required to review and update the policy every two years and file a policy with the State Board of Education. So when you, when you go through this, there's just an awful lot of detail. It is, it is administratively burdensome. It is not optional on our part. So we have to have something, we have to have it in place. And my sense is that we will try and do our best to get this in as good a form as we can for the fifteenth of April deadline, and then as we move forward, the administration and the board will have to work together and make adjustments or modifications based on what really happens. I mean, there, there will obviously will not be perfect, but we need to have something that is close to what is required by the legislation. So.
Can I just add?
Please.
The legislation, I think, is, it's obviously the, the work of a committee. It, it does not flow smoothly, it's not, it's not cohesive. I, I am, I feel pretty safe in predicting that the legislature isn't through with this subject, and, and I think there is a, there is a concern in a lot of school districts around the state, not only because bullying is a significant problem, but of the, of the burdens that, that this particular statute is, is going to place upon school districts. So, again, I think, I think that the legislature probably is not finished with this topic, and, you know, next year we'll be here, you know, with a modified statute that hopefully will, will make it work a little easier.
Chair, a question?
Yeah, I did. The bullying policy is a separate policy from the discipline policy?
Yes.
And is there a piece in there, a sub-defense division of the policy?
In what regard?
In, because we've talked about, even in the discipline policy, that's something we could probably look at later on, but that there's, when kids are defending themselves, they become, you know, guilty of, of fighting, and many of them, many times it has been reported, and they defend themselves, and they, they, they are disciplined just as, as the perpetrator is. So I guess maybe it doesn't fit in the bullying policy as much as it fits in the discipline policy, so that might be something you can look at.
I, I don't recall, it's, it's six pages, but I do not recall that being addressed in this policy.
No, but we have talked about in the past, actually looking at, you know, whether children have the right to defend themselves.
There, there's also another policy which is, is related to this, there's a number of cross-references. Harassment of students is prohibited, policy number seven-twenty, which gets into this, and that includes a definition of bullying, which was adopted by this board, I believe, two years ago.
Yeah, we put that together through the parent-teacher advisor.
So that, and, and the other thing is, we need to reconcile those definitions with this language because there may be some differences in the two definitions. They cannot be contradictory in effect, so we've tried to take that into account.
It, it sounds to me like this is different enough and more detailed enough that, once we adopt it, there's going to be, need to be some education in the buildings as far as.
Yes.
Rolling it out and making sure everybody understands the procedures. Mr. Crawford?
Those prior definitions that we adopted on bullying were likewise from the legislature. And also, some of it was written originally here, too.
Okay, but, but some of the conflict is on them.
Some of the conflict would, could be on them, but we need, what we need to do is adopt this first and then reconcile it to the other one. We can't, doing them simultaneously isn't going to work because one changes and then the other changes, so we need to do that in sequence. This, this is, this is not an easy subject to get across.
No, and to the point of communication and that, I mean, we've talked about the education or the development that needs to occur within the buildings. I think it's also very important that this be communicated with parents as well, leveraging the parent association and.
PT.
PT, yeah. Parent-teacher advisory as well as parent-university, every means available to get this communicated out so that parents know the process for reporting their rights as well as what our obligations are to them. So it, it carries many, many facets, and I think we need to leverage everything we can to get it out.
Just, I'm sorry, please.
If I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the policy is going to be housed on the website?
Of course.
All, all of ours are, so.
Yeah, so that it's, it's available.
Just, there was one other point that I wanted to make, too, and, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, finish.
No, go ahead.
Oh, this is totally unrelated to that, but it's, we already have a policy, in our policy manual designated as seven-one-eighty, and I believe it's a dress code kind of policy. So we'll, as part of this whole thing, we'll have to renumber that policy elsewhere. The committee has discussed it and agrees that it's probably best that we, to the greatest extent possible, use the numbering system that I S B uses in its policy manual, and, and that generally is reflected in, in our, in our policy manual.
To give you an idea of the administrative burden, the, there's a bullying prevention and response plan, which in effect would become the administrative procedure in its draft form, its twelve pages. So that gives you some idea of the depth and detail to which the legislature went in defining and dictating what should and shouldn't be done. And then, in order to actually put it into place and put it into action, that's the second piece, which is the administrative procedure. And we'd, we'd adopt that after we would adopt the policy. So the administrative procedure doesn't have to be done at the same time, is that correct?
Well, it, it doesn't have to be approved by the board, it's, administration's documents generally shared with the board as an information item.
Yeah, so we don't have to vote on that.
So the paperwork you're talking about, does that start actually at the classroom level, so that it's going to affect teachers and it's going to affect building administrators and?
For example, investigation, upon the receipt of a bullying report, the staff member shall promptly notify the building principal or designee, and that person shall investigate whether a report of bullying is within the permissible scope of the district's jurisdiction. I mean, that starts at the classroom level. So there's, there's going to be a substantial administrative burden, and there's some training here that's going to need to take place once we get the documents in order. I don't think they have to be as comprehensive as what was drafted here, but at the same time to meet the letter of what's required in the legislation, there are things that we have to do.
Okay.
So, there was one other policy issue that came up, if we could touch on that.
Sure.
I believe this was seven-seventy was the policy issue, and this dealt with the, was that in it?
On the consent agenda.
Could I, we'll just talk about that at that time, then.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so those are first readings of seven-one-ninety and seven-one-eighty. If, as you read through them, you come up with any more questions, have those ready at the next board meeting, it'll, they will be an action item at the next board meeting, but we can, of course, if you get questions ahead of time so that they can get answered.
One thing we might want to consider doing is, is publishing these in draft form on the website and have people take a look at them. I mean, it would give people a, a sense of, of the complexity and also the details, and I would welcome comment on it if people had thoughts that.
It's a good idea.
Makes, makes sense, so.
Okay, we'll do that.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, were purchase orders over twenty-five-hundred dollars, or are there any questions for Mr. Wilcoxton tonight? Seeing none, report a request under the Freedom of Information Act and status of such requests.
Since our last board meeting report on March ninth, two thousand and fifteen, we received two new Freedom of Information Act requests. Of these new requests, none were filled. There were two pending requests noted on the March ninth, two thousand and fifteenth board report. One request was filled. We received thirty requests for this calendar year.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. We'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present our initial budget recommendations to you. With me tonight are Carla Eman, Director of Budgets and Compliance, and Michael McKenzie, Comptroller. Before we start with the actual presentation, I want to provide some context for our discussion tonight. First, we'll provide background on where the district is financially and where we could be if we don't address our operating budget deficit. We'll talk about the budget development process. You'll recall that when we adopted the two thousand and fifteen budget in the fall, we talked about the need for earlier and a more inclusive budget discussion. Today's presentation will include initial or preliminary thoughts or options for the two thousand and sixteen budget. These are only preliminary recommendations, and we will, and will be discussed and refined before our next report to the board in May. I'd also like to share that the recommendations we'll discuss today were not developed solely by the finance staff sitting at the table. Also participating was the entire superintendent's cabinet, the curriculum staff, special ed, HR, research, technology, buildings and grounds, transportation, security, and legal. The initial recommendations are now being presented to the board and to the public for further discussion. We're going to structure this presentation in five main areas. We're going to provide some financial background, we're going to give an overview of the district's current finances, discuss the need for changes in budget planning, and present preliminary two thousand and sixteen budget recommendations, and then next steps. Public Schools has remarkable rules. One of those is respect our finances. Basically, that rule is to set a budget, stay within that budget, and look for ways for cost savings. The State Board of Education also has an interest in our budget. They have statutory responsibility to monitor the financial condition of all Illinois public schools. As part of that responsibility, they develop ranks for the financial condition of each school, and these are ranked high to low, recognition, review, early warning, and watch. District currently has a rating of review. We had an early warning rating in two thousand and nine, and we have been on review since then. And the State Board of Education is also statutorily, statutorily required to monitor and intervene when financial conditions so dictate in a school district. Recently, our bonds were downgraded from A-plus to A, which is still a very high ranking for bonds. The outlook was changed from stable to negative, and the rationale that Moody's put in their ratings report was, was due to the budget imbalance in the district's general fund and projected deficits and large drawdowns in reserves, and we'll talk about those in our presentation. Again, in the two thousand and fifteen budget development, we did make some observations, and we discussed these with the board. The budget planning needed to start earlier, and that's one of the reasons we're here tonight. The budget district priorities drive the budget, priority setting and budget decision-making are inclusive and a collaborative process, and again, that we had all facets of the superintendent's cabinet with these. We're now presenting these initial budget recommendations to the board and to the community. And the board directive that initial budget planning, we would have a report to the board in March, and this report is consistent with that discussion. The schedule for two thousand and sixteen budget development, we're here tonight, initial discussion of the budget, and we are also, the board acted on the reduction in force in teachers due to contract and Illinois law. In May, we plan to bring another budget report to the board and hopefully have some of these recommendations refined. In June, we work on grant budgets, and we try to compile those budgets. Timeframe typically June to, June first to July first is when the General Assembly will complete their spring session. We hope that that happens this year, but there's lots of challenges in Springfield, so it's, it's hard to tell when the spring session will conclude this year. We should know state grant funding then, again, if the General Assembly completes the, their spring session on time. August twenty-fourth, we'll bring preliminary two thousand and six budget recommendations to the board, and hopefully the board will approve those recommendations in September of two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, I'm going to cover some key financial terms, just a quick review here, that a fiscal year is any twelve-month period over which an entity budgets its spending, and of course, ours is July first to June thirtieth, but some of the community agencies we work with, as well as some of the grants, may differ. They could have a December, you know, a January to December year, but our audit is based on our fiscal year, again, July first to June thirtieth. Another important factor is we need to know what funds are and why we use fund accounting. It is a way for us to have self-balancing accounts, and they're used for very specific purposes. They're also a part of an accounting system for more accountability instead of profitability because we're a governmental agency. Transportation Fund would be an example of one where that is anything to do as far as maintenance of buses, transporting the students, that's, and it's completely separate This shows the district operating funds, we have four of them. The education fund is where we find teacher pay, many of our grants, and many of our day-to-day supply expenses. The operations and maintenance fund is for buildings and grounds, anything having to do with the general maintenance of our buildings. And then, as I stated, we have our transportation fund, anything to do with transporting the students, and then the municipal retirement and social security fund, Fund Fifty. Some of the other funds are listed here, the debt service where we pay the bond interest and principal from, our capital projects, which has been well-used over the last couple of years with our more major capital projects. And then I'll jump down to the self-insurance Fund Ninety-seven. That's a fund that we were using several years ago, and that has come back into being because we're now self-funded for our medical insurance. Operating results, you need to think of as a period of time. A surplus might be an example of your paycheck was a thousand dollars, your expenses for that time period were eight hundred, so you have a two-hundred-dollar surplus right where you want to land. Another week or another period in time, you might have a paycheck of a thousand, but your expenses were twelve-hundred. Unexpected car repairs or other issues came up, maybe you have to dip into savings or you need to take out a loan. For fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, the district has operating deficits budgeted in all four of our operating funds that I just talked about, and three of the five non-operating And then finally, the financial position. There's a certain point in time, you could think about that, when you get your bank statement or at the end of the year, where are you sitting? Do you have assets that are greater than your liabilities, or are your liabilities greater than your assets? The district's two thousand and fifteen budget projects negative financial positions in the education, operations and maintenance, tort, and life safety funds.
All right, now we get to the numbers you've all been looking forward to, what we look forward to anyway in our area. Here's the, just to show you the troubles or the, the challenges we face, the first four lines are the audited results for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, and then the budgeted two thousand and fifteen numbers. The important numbers here on this chart are the average percent change of revenues over those five years has been a negative one-point-nine percent, while expenditures have actually been very well-controlled in the fact that they've only increased one-point-six percent over those five. only increased 1.6% over those five years on average, and CPI has increased on average 1.8%. So our expenditures have actually been under inflationary numbers, but at the same time, our revenues have been declining. So when you put those two together, you'll notice that in 2011, the audited difference for the operating funds, we actually had a surplus of $9.5 million, whereas last year we had a deficit of $8.6 million, and this year we're projecting a deficit of $11.5 million. And if these, some of the stuff the state's talking about, it could increase that number. But a lot of that's because revenue has declined. We've said this before, but now we have to deal with those problems. This is salaries, same years, but salaries and benefits only, not with all the other things. And you'll notice that salaries over those five-year periods have only increased 0.5% on average, where benefits have increased 2.1%. But the total has only been a 0.9% increase over those five years compared to inflation of 1.8%. So really, we don't really have an expense problem. We've had a revenue problem, but the revenue problem is not fixing itself, so we need to do something about the expenses, unfortunately. So that just gives you a background of where the numbers come from. Here's a detail of the current operating budget. And we always talk about the four funds, the Education Fund, O&amp;M, Transportation and IMR, Social Security is the operating funds. The largest fund, the Education Fund, is budgeted to have a $9.9 million deficit, if you look near the bottom on the left-hand column of numbers. And the fund balance that began the year at $6.1 million is now projected to have a negative fund balance of $3.8 million at the end of this current fiscal year. And if you look at total operating funds, at the beginning of the year, we had a $10.6 million fund balance, but with $11.5 million projected deficit that we're projecting for the current year, our fund balances at the end of the year will be $883,000 negative is our projections at this point, which, as I said before, if the state doesn't give us part of our last general state aid payment, like there's rumors, it could be worse than this even. So some fact of the matter is not supportable, so we need to do something to the expense side of the budget. These are our non-operating funds. Specific things that happen here, the Capital Projects Funds and Life Safety are the ones that we deal with operations and maintenance. We'll talk about that later. But Capital Projects Fund, we received $30-odd million several years ago from the Capital Development Board, the Illinois Capital Development Board. So we've been doing a lot of the major projects with security and technology and all these things. And so we've done a lot of things, but there's still a lot of things to be done. And at the end of the year, we're projected to have in that fund $2.1 million. So that fund is mostly expended with projects that have been done already. And then Life Safety is where we have a lot of Life Safety projects, and obviously doesn't have a fund balance to support those things. Next slide you've seen before as part of the budget presentation last fall, where these are major revenue sources. The important thing here is property taxes are 40% of our budget revenue in the operating funds, and general state aid is 27%. We'll talk about those more later, but those have been declining over the last couple of years. Here's our revenue categories in numbers, and you'll see that from 2011 to 2014, most of these revenue amounts have declined. Property taxes have declined on average 1.3%, and general state aid has basically been flat over that period of time because of the proration that's been going on. So overall, it's been declined, you know, the total direct revenues have been declining 2.1% over that four-year period. Slightly different numbers from the earlier numbers, just to point out, other numbers included the budget for 2015. This is only the audited numbers, 2011 to 2014. Here's expenditures with the major categories, the objects that we frequently talk about. Again, salaries are only up 0.8%. Benefits are up 2.7% over that period of time. Purchase Services is up 7.6%, but most of that is from Quest, which in that period of time turned, increased from $700,000 because 2011 was their first year to 2014 where it was $3.5 million that they received. So that's the biggest increase in that line item. If anybody has any questions during this, please just chime in, by the way. I don't say that before. But anyway, in total, the total direct expenditures for the operating funds have increased 1.9% over that four-year period. When we talk about EAV, these are the major categories within our school district for EAV, mostly residential, commercial, a few other items in there, but most of ours is residential, commercial. And here's our historical EAVs over the last five years, and this is why our property taxes have declined, is because our EAV has declined because of the overall economy over the last several years. And so our property taxes have declined, especially in the operating funds, because most of the operating funds are being levied at their statutory limit. And then here's, again, the taxes extended. Some of these slides are same slides you saw either during the tax levy or things. So we've had a slow decline over the last few years, at the same time that our expenses have had a slow increase. All right, here's general state aid. We talk about over the last few years. Mark talked a little bit about this earlier, but the foundation level is 6119. There's a complicated formula about how the state figures out the general state aid entitlement, which is that second line. There's a spreadsheet I could show you if you ever want to look at it. But historically, that 6119 increased every year, but because of the state's budget issues, they've left the foundation level at 6119. And that's supposed to be the minimum amount that each district needs for each student to educate them. And depending on your resources, your local resources, if your local resources are enough, then your general state aid is very small. So there's a complicated formula about that based on your local resources and your state resources. And so when you do our calculation based on our average daily attendance, our entitlement is that line. But the state, because of their budget problems, have been only funding a smaller percentage, and that's that 99% all the way to the current year where they're only funding 89.1% of general state aid. They were doing that for everybody in the state. And so our unfunded amount this year is $5.4 million. And so our cumulative unfunded over this period of time is $18.6 million. Obviously, if we'd been funded at 100% this entire time, we'd be having a far different discussion about revenues and expenditures.
Before we leave this slide, and again, one of the discussions taking place in Springfield is what to do with the 2015 fiscal year deficit on the state level. Right now, our state aid for 2015 is prorated to the tune that we're losing $5.4 million due to the proration. If the state actually reduces our state aid grant by the 2.25%, that number will increase by $1 million, so we would be underfunded by $6.4 million. If the state decides to withhold our final general state aid payment, that number will be $7.4 million. Each state aid payment is about $2 million. So if the state decides to basically not fund the last payment, that deficit would grow to $7.4 million. Our accumulated unfunded would be $20.7 million.
You talk about the general state aid entitlement for 2015, and then the general state aid paid for 2015.
Correct.
Are you saying that we've already been paid?
No, we get over 11 months, we get two months, two payments a month. So it's through May, I think, we get $2 million. So we get every, twice a month, we get $2 million, basically, because we're going to get $44,543,000 is what our general state aid paid. So we get it throughout the year, so we have not been paid that total amount. And so...
I realize it comes each month, a little over $2 million, but considering the fact that this is what's being said, you're anticipating that you're going to get that for 2015, right?
Well, there's rumors now that they won't pay that last little bit.
Pardon me?
There's rumors right now that to balance the current year budget, the state is going to withhold part of, part or all of the last payment. And so that will increase the, you know, our current year deficit.
Is that what, is that why you're anticipating an $11 million deficit? Are you adding that?
That would make it a $12 or $13 million deficit for the current year if they withhold that last, part of that last payment. The next section we'd like to talk about is the need for changes in budget planning. See how fast that goes? Look away, he's changed the slide. 2016 budget challenges. Again, we've talked about several of these things. Most local, state, and federal revenue sources are stagnant at best, while expenditures continue to increase. The Illinois General Assembly and the Governor chose not to extend the temporary income tax increase, and that's leaving a large hole in the state budget. Salaries and benefits continue to increase due to contractual agreements and are the largest district expense category. And budget pressures require that we look at staffing levels and continue to review, prioritize, and adjust those staffing levels. Oh, this didn't, this is really a neat slide, but unfortunately, there's a person in the middle that's on a teeter-totter, and it's a choice between wants and needs, but it didn't come out very well, so apologize for that. This is kind of a what-if, and this may be a worst-case scenario, but we have a 2015 budget that we've talked about. It's got an $11.5 million deficit right now. If you take a worst-case scenario and increase the, or decrease the revenues by the historical pattern of 2.1% per year, that's been the average decrease in revenues, and increase expenditures at 1.9%, which has been the historical increase in expenditures, this is what the budget could look like, worst-case scenario, most likely, in 2018. We would be seeing an operating budget increase from $11.5 million deficit to $29.6 million deficit, which would be completely out of the ballpark. Mr. Clay?
A question about that in terms of, at what point would we run out of working cash?
We actually have a slide under current scenario coming up soon that would talk about cash flow.
But I mean, in terms of not just the monthly cash flow, but the annual cash flow here?
Well, that's a good question. We can work on that, but I think that even, there's even a shorter-term problem than that in this, the coming fiscal year.
Yeah, okay.
Which is very timely because it's the next slide. Thank you. So this is projected cash flow. So one of the challenges is making sure you have enough cash to pay bills, just like a household would do. Current scenario, we know our pattern of revenue when we receive money based on state aid payments and local property tax payments. We have a pretty good idea what our expenditures are, the biggest being payroll, and payroll is pretty predictable. At this scenario, we're looking at a negative cash position in May of 2016 if we keep spending at the current expenditure level. So at that point, in May of 2016, where the arrow is, this would require short-term borrowing to make payroll in May of 2016.
And that's even including the working cash bonds that we've got for cash flow now, correct?
Correct. It includes working cash. Carla makes a good point. This assumption is, this is assuming that we receive state aid as budgeted. If the state cuts our funding by $2 million this year, then that cash would be depleted by $2 million. So we're going to move into our initial 2016 budget recommendations. And again, these budget recommendations involve the superintendent's cabinet, involve staff from curriculum, finance, technology, student services, building and maintenance, transportation, research, and security. I will tell you that the superintendent isn't listed in that list that was involved in the initial discussions. She was very patient and led staff work through this, and we had, we formed two basically subcommittees. One looked at programmatic needs and one looked at staffing needs. We worked through this. It was challenging. It was focused. It took a while to get our momentum going. And then once we came up with these initial recommendations, we presented those to the superintendent, and then we went through another round of vetting these initial budget In our budget priorities, we're recognizing that in 2015, we had a planned deficit to implement high educational priorities. A priority is eliminating the gap between revenues and expenditures as one of the highest priorities in fiscal year 2016 and beyond. And we want a budget process, and we talked about this in the fall, that's more inclusive, that we start earlier. We get broader input from the Board and the community before we actually take a final budget to the Board in August. And we've talked about these two, the fiscal challenges. Budgeting, you always plan for the worst and hope for the best. We are challenged by expenditures that are increasingly exceeding revenues, and we've got stagnant EAV and local tax revenue. Our state funding, challenges at the state level due to the expiration of the temporary income tax surcharge. General state aid and categoricals, we've had decreases in proration. And the other 800-pound gorilla that's sitting out there is pension shift. If that happens, we're going to need to factor that into the budget. On the expenditure side, again, our expenditures really have been increasing below the rate of inflation, and staffing levels are increasing with stable enrollments and decreasing revenues.
I just wanted to make a comment before we go on to the next slide, that the next group of slides are the most difficult for us. I've been here in particular since the beginning and have seen the budget built. We had detailed discussions. Every year, we review where we're at and where we're headed. We talk about interventions. We talk about curriculum needs for our students, talk about alternative education needs, counseling needs, every category. We talk about the programs and what staffing it's going to take to fulfill the needs within the district. That would have included, you know, Dave Myers being able to look at his staffing and make determinations of what would do the best for the district, for the buildings. So it's at every level, every piece of it, and there's just a sense now, as we turn to the next slide, of seeing a lot of that dismantled, and I think it's upsetting to everybody on the cabinet, everybody within the district, and to the community as a whole because we took input from the community, from everyone, building it on what the needs were, what the perceived needs were, what we felt we could do with what we had. And so it's really disappointing.
That's hard to follow.
I want to, I do appreciate you frameworking that for us with your statement to let us know what that involved with you all in presenting this, that this is very difficult. I know in previewing it, it was very hard to read, so thank you.
It was also very difficult working through these and compiling this list, and for a lot of reasons, for everybody that was sitting around the table trying to put these together, but it's, again, it's something we needed to do. These are initial budget recommendations for 2016 to get the discussion going. But again, these are, these, we have to figure out a way to reduce expenditure, and so these are our initial recommendations. And again, the superintendent's cabinet, we broke this up into two areas. We looked at program reductions and staffing reductions, and within those areas, we categorized those in administration, instruction, curriculum, and training, other support. And those were the $6.7 million in the upper half that, there was a pretty good consensus within the superintendent's cabinet that those were, those were doable reductions. To attain our goal, and again, this is just the education fund of $9 million, we looked at some additional options for reduction, and these are, these are harder ones. These are not ones that were in the consensus group up above, so there's some additional options for reduction to try to get to the $9 million. And again, these are, we're opening this up for other suggestions, but our goal is really to get our revenues and expenditures in balance in 2016, so...
Remember also, this is just the education fund. I mean, we'll do the transportation fund and O and M after this, but transportation, our education fund is first.
Okay, I'm going to go through each category. This is starting with administration. I'll go down the left side and then go down the right side. So the program area first. We had fine arts, came up with some program cuts, but also did .5 coordinator, that's a .5 FTE of a person there, and that's how we came up with the $63,982. In the marketing area, we looked at changing Skylark to School Wires and decreasing some of the marketing supplies for a total of $39,173. Directed enhancement funds are upper-level funds, superintendent, IIO funding of needs for buildings. We're doing a 50% cut there. Going over to the right side, we have administrators. That would include seven administrators. Then we have curriculum facilitators/regional technology trainers, that's 5.5. The .5 there goes with the .5 on the other side with the coordinator. And then clerical, there'd be one position there. And that gave us the totals of $778,939 and $303,155 for the program, which is for the administrative.
So once again, it's administrative and also teaching positions. So both sides, from administrative level and also teaching positions, are being reduced.
And then I'd point out on the slide as well, that these positions would then go back into the classroom in most cases, not talking about the clerical, but for the curriculum facilitators, go back to the classroom, as well as some of the administrators. Okay, on the next page. There, we're talking about the direct instruction area, starting again on the left-hand column. Accelerated Reader would have to be taken up by Title I funding as individual buildings would desire, but as a district, we won't be able to support that any longer. Elevate was a pilot program this year that we were utilizing because we were struggling with getting tutors in some of our buildings, and this was more of an online tutoring situation that we thought might be a different direction to go for some of our buildings, or something you could wrap into having far fewer tutors. And unfortunately, we'll have to let that go completely. The Paxton Labs, that's something we've been investing in for a couple of years now. What we're talking about here is we were at a $259,000 level, and we would be cutting that by $181,300 down to $78,000. We have only agreed to one more lab at this point for the new year, is what we're looking at for manual, and then otherwise, it would just be the training and such that we need. So that would allow for a fairly large cut then for the coming year. Rosetta Stone is what we utilize when we are short-staffed, mainly, we're talking our foreign language Spanish teachers. And what we're looking at now is we've filled one of the positions, and so one school won't need the Rosetta Stone, but I believe it's four other situations that are still needed, so that would be a $10,000 cut. You get to the Illinois Virtual School, that's what we needed when we were short-staffed in the foreign language area in high schools, because Rosetta Stone won't fulfill that need. And so that will actually increase by just a small amount in order to have what we need for our high school level. Then the Woodruff Career Exploration area, those are the different, anywhere from culinary and hair and all of the different programs that we have going on over there. They've run the program really well this year, being very careful of the finances. So we feel we can cut back there. We aren't going to need the new equipment. There's things that, you know, we've already gotten it set up, so we should be able to cut way back there and just continue with the basic supplies and the, you know, the things that are consumable. Field trips, we plan to cut back, $36,000, mandate being just slightly more than that for the new year. We have found that we're just going to have to limit it from what we have enjoyed in the past, and it's been very good experiences for our students. The summer programs will cut back slightly as well. The athletic area, things that are funded through the education fund. We're also looking to eliminate the longer school day at Franklin, Northmore, Enrolling Acres. That would be the leftover from being the Edison schools. What that is equal to is about 15 minutes at each school, and when you look at the number of staff, that comes up with our 102,960. Textbooks was a real struggle. We went through that area probably two or three different times, trying to figure out if there was any way that we could keep the level high enough that we could still do a, can't think of the word now, a new adoption, thank you, a new adoption, because a lot of our textbooks are very old, but we've done a good job with updating more than several of them. And as we passed through this area a couple of times, we did settle in on the $1 million figure. We were at 1.3 million, so 300,000 will allow us for some repairs and some more minor textbooks that we might need. I believe we do need sex ed, and there was a couple others where hopefully, you know, we need to look at what that's going to come to in the budget, but we really, really want to focus in on keeping that at the million-dollar level. And then...
Question.
Sure.
Have we looked at what can be done in the area of like digital books, things like that? So instead of talking about an actual hard copy of a book, we can leverage more of, you know...
I think the problem there, it's supposed to be both between technology and the fact that you do, you're tied in, you have to pay that license fee every year, that book's not yours forever, they require you to update it, and then that we don't necessarily have a situation for all of the students to have a laptop or some kind of a device to have it on. That would be ideal if we could afford to, to do it that way, and I believe that the license renewal would be less than having to buy the new textbooks.
Is that something we could look at?
Sure. Go to that. And then our final area there, speaking of technology, we're looking at a cut of the $383,500. We laid out all of the programs and processes that we needed for the new year with the technology director, and then we needed to cut back a little in the area that was, it'd be computer replacements mostly, but we will be replacing a lot of computers still in order for them to run on, for the software to run on them, but we have decided that we needed to cut back in some of those areas. Then let's go over to the right-hand column, and we have teacher aides. Well, first, I need to say that we meet every year and determine the staffing. We go through building by building with the IIOs and the HR staff. We look at each building individually and what their needs are. That includes the special ed director, the ELL director, everybody is included in that. And what we came up with then, starting at the top, was teacher aides 14. That would be in the K8 area. And then we also came up with additional K8 teachers needed, would be 4.5. And then we are looking at adjusting the class size in K1 that has been at a 21, 22, 23-type level, and having to take that up to where our second and third grade classrooms are, that would save 15 positions. Then there was a separate meeting where all high schools were looked at and what positions they have there, and it was determined that 26 positions were what were available there. That brings our cuts for the staffing side to 1.8 million, and then our program side to 2.2 million. Moving on into the curriculum and training area, the IB training, we determined that there was less training would be needed, that the program is pretty well in place. There'll be some training, but not to the degree that there has been. For the AP programs, it is less training now. Again, the programs are in place, but we needed to add a summer program for a couple thousand dollars, so that's where they just kind of met in the middle, so it's just a slight increase there of $798. Then we have the Avid Training and Supplies, that was at $323,000, and we will be saving $50,000 there. It's still a program that is growing, and it's important to our students in our district, but we are able to cut back somewhat there. For testing, again, it went both ways. We had decided that DIBELS Reading III could be eliminated, but in turn, that we needed to add the PSAT for several grade levels and the SAT, and so that's why there would be an increase in spending there. The next line would be the Literacy Strategies Consultant and consultants in that area, that that would be a $35,000 reduction as that, again, is mostly in place. Then we have CAGEN. Current year, we have spent $55,000, and we're looking at decreasing that by $30,000. Pinpoint is the assessment and curriculum software, and we're in the last two years of that contract, and so that decreased by 100,000. It will remain at that level for the following year as well, and then that contract will be over with. So that's a savings of 100,000. 95% group has been around for a few years now, and so we are basically able to support the program on our own. There'll be 10,000 remaining for that, but it's a $40,000 cut, so we may need a couple of small support visits, but we should be ready to roll on that one. Same with Math Forward. Again, that has been going on for a couple of years as far as the training and implementing of it, and it would be fully implemented then at the end of this year, so that would be a savings of 73,000. Then we go to our overall curriculum department, where we have some training stipends, printing equipment, and that, we also see that we can cut by $187,500. That may mean less training and less opportunities for some of our staff, but we hope to keep the main elements of what we're trying to focus on. Then on the right-hand side...
Go finish the slide.
Okay. On the right-hand side, we have interventionists. In some buildings, we have more than one, and this would allow just for one in every building, instead of allowing for two in some of the buildings.
I just want to talk about the process for a moment. We get some funds through Title I and Title II. How were those accounted for in these staffing reductions? Because we don't have a lot of control over those funds, those funds have to be spent in certain ways. Do those, are any of these reductions, or maybe the better way to ask it is, does Title, do Title I and Title II funds, are there any discretion there for us to say, we're not going to spend the money on there and still retain the funds, or do they go back?
Right. We can not spend them on, the way you have to look at it is on these particular positions, but at this point in time, the way we are looking, for example, you know, one example would be interventionists versus counselors, for example, that we have felt that we need to have the counselors within that Title I budget is more important than having multiple interventionists, that we want to try to cover both. But you're right in that the money has to be spent at each school and centrally, for example, within Title I or within Title II, right? All the money has to be spent, so there's that careful balance between what direction we're going, what our needs are, but yet at the same time, you don't want to cut a position and then get into that situation where, and then what were you going to do? Or how is it going to be spent? So we want to really look at our current staffing needs and fit those as best we can into the grants.
I've got a question on the Title I. Is it a possibility that, as you look at next year's grants, because we write the grants every year, correct?
Right.
That you could spend less in one area and more in, more on staff in order to keep some of the staff positions rather than some of the other things they're using?
Yes. And that is definitely what we're, what we'll be looking at. I think the principals are going to have input, not I think, I know they'll have input on that, and we'll look at what their needs are and try to balance it out the best we can. And so there, there will be some situations where they can have the input to say, but I need that other person. And that's more important than the equipment, more important than a certain program maybe that I was utilizing before, and they'll have that opportunity.
Thank you.
So that's outside-the-box thinking?
Yeah, I mean, that's been, there's been a big balance about that, so yes, yes.
Definitely. Okay. Moving on to the next screen. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to talk about other support, and these are real difficult areas too. The Center for Prevention of Abuse, we've been working closely with them, and they come to us every year and talk about the needs, got to get to my note on what it's called, for Aaron's Law. And we do have to have programs that share that information with our parents, and we also work with our students on that. We're still looking at, we need to cut that in half, and they knew there was a risk out there, that we were being as helpful as we could. We try to look at the number of hours they put in in our buildings. They do more than just for our District 150. They're working with other places, other agencies as well. But I think that we are still able to meet the needs of Aaron's Law and have to cut it down to the 8,000. It'll mean less visits. It could be, they're currently at all of our parent universities, for example, while perhaps we won't have them at all of the parent universities. Then moving on to the next line is another difficult one. Elite would be eliminated from our two schools. The Old Bradley Community Grant Program, that was something totally funded by Bradley in the beginning, and then we took it over, and now it's with Family Core. Those positions would need to be adjusted to what, the level of what the other positions are at Family Core at this time. The health centers are kind of an interesting situation. It would be an increase, a small increase in funding. It probably won't be as much as it shows there. It will be somewhere in between. The grant funds that support it, they're talking about that being cut, maybe $4,000. And then the cost or, you know, of the, the contract with the hospital, that's expected to be 1% to 2% increase. So that doesn't look to come quite to the 13,000. We wanted to give it, you know, just a little bit of wiggle room there. We're still negotiating that. What we have to realize there, you don't get the grant money if you don't have the health center. So it's not a situation where you could use the money in another way. Either you're doing it or you're not. It is true that we put some of our own money into it, but at the same time, we feel like we're getting a real good return on our own money, the district money, for this cause, and so therefore want to continue it for probably between $8,000 and $13,000 increase. Then, of course, we have our Quest funding, and that's going to increase again as another grade level comes online. Then we have Family Core. We're looking at up to a one-half reduction there of $247,000. Again, maybe that's where Deb Wolfmeyer's comment comes in, that there would be some chance for some wiggle room there. We'll have to look at a per-school situation and what Title I funds can or cannot cover there, and what, again, the direction that the district's going there. That's, by the way, then Counseling Services through Family Core. And then the legal fees savings looked to be coming in at perhaps $100,000 for the year coming up, and so we're looking at saving money there. Yes?
What is our, I saw back on the TORT slide, they talked about Purchase Services around 2.2 million. Did I see that correctly?
See.
Pardon me? It was in the, it was in the TORT fund. It talked about salaries, Purchase Services...
Right, 2.2 million, right, that's correct.
Okay. So that, that is, that is legal, that is payment for legal services outside the district, right?
That's not all legal services. It's, it could be insurance, like liability insurance and stuff is in that fund also, so that's part of that, that's number two.
Some salaries in there too, correct.
Well, there's salary and benefits also, that's, you know.
Well, salaries and benefits for the, or another.
Right, that's another, yeah, yeah, five, almost five million in total, but, yeah, but the 2.2 million is not all legal fees. It's some of that is, a lot of that actually is property and casualty insurance and things like that. There's like, that's why it's 1.3 million, I think, this year, a little over that, so. So I can, I can get the real detail if you'd like, but I mean, I don't have that.
Well, I think we need to have the details. I, I, I take a particular interest in it because it's, it's something I'm familiar with, and I'd like to see where the district can be, you know, the most fiscally responsible in that area and give my two cents, I guess.
The legal fees we're talking about here is the education fund, the legal fees that get put to the education fund.
Oh.
This is not legal fees.
My bad, I'm, I'm reading that wrong, okay.
This is not, this is not total legal fees.
I still like the information though.
Yeah, okay, we can, we'll get to that, so.
I have a question.
I'm tired. Now I'm done.
Okay, Mike, continue.
I want to ask a question on the Quest increase for funding. Okay. Forgive me if I ask elementary questions, but it's for my own clarification. What, why are we counting the Quest fund as an increase if the funds that they receive follow the children? It's not coming necessarily out of our budget. It follows the kids, right?
It does.
It goes with the children from us, so we don't have them anymore, so it's not part of our budget. Help me out with that.
Unfortunately, our costs don't decrease at the same rate that we are paying out for them to educate. We don't lose a teacher because of how they're spread out over different classes, different schools. It doesn't allow us to eliminate staff to the same degree of what we, of the students sent out. Does that make sense?
It does, but it sounds like it's okay for you to eliminate staff if you're talking about, how many teachers were on that last list? That you find a way to streamline that way. 26 teachers on a list, so it sounds like you're able to compact or realign where it needed.
Yeah, and we're saving money, we're saving money here, but we're, you know.
But we still have to pay it out somewhere.
Right.
Well, I'm not understanding that. It, I'm just not understanding that. If, if, if the amount of money that they are receiving is contingent upon how many students they have that leave us and go to them, what is the additional cost that we are putting with that?
So we have a class here of 27, and a teacher is assigned to this class of 27 students. He was saying K1 up to 27, and the three of my students who even go to Quest, we still have a whole class of the students that is skilled, and we still have to pay for that teacher that's already been assigned to that group of students. Most times when the students are going to Quest, you're pulling students, numbers of students from different, uh, grade levels, different classes.
I understand that. Yeah, I understand that. But when you do your staffing, you also realign those staff based on the number of students, because all during the year, students are added to a class or taken from a class, and sometimes you eliminate and combine students, combine classes based on the number. Safe instance, you have four.
Can I jump in for one second? I think, I think one of the issues is the Quest students are spread out among so many different classes that there's really no marginal savings if a student leaves a particular class, so, you know, these, these students are coming from all different areas and different classes and different grades and different schools, and when, when you take them all out of the, the district, there's really no savings to the district from those students going.
Because you can't shift between buildings. I guess that's what the point is.
No, I understand that, I understand that, but we do shift between buildings. We move teachers around.
When, when they did the analysis of each individual school and each, you know, they, they took that into effect, and that's why some of the teachers, probably, I mean, without looking at one-to-one, I mean, you know, some of that could be attributable, attributable to that, but.
Okay, can, and now, and you know what? I want a hard copy of this so that I can ask my questions at some point. I have lots and lots of questions, but what is the number, estimated number of students that are leaving our district and all over, from, from all over?
75.
Going to, going, 75?
75.
And we have.
Are you asking the total number, are you asking the total number at Quest, or?
That, that this number, $728,000 represents. You said they were adding a class.
One more class, grade level, which is 75,000.
They're adding a grade level.
75 students, I mean.
Pardon me?
75 students, it's one additional class.
Okay, so we have 75 students within our, our school district going to Quest, right? And they're from all the different schools.
Right.
Yeah, they're currently in fourth grade, so they'll be in fifth grade next year at Quest.
So from all the fifth grade classes, fourth grade classes?
Yeah.
They'll be going in next year. They're kind of a different story.
And the, you know, the, the staffing group, I guess I'm, I'm not sure who figured those numbers, I think 10 to 18, doesn't matter.
All right.
And that's, that's the change from the current year budget. You've got to understand that these are, most of these are changes from current, the current year amounts.
There's another high school class that's added too, because they've got another, it's rolled forward, so you've got that.
Right, they roll forward and then they add the fourth, fourth graders going to fifth grade.
It'll continue to impact us until through the 12th grade, and then once they're, as I call it loaded, then you're not going to have that each year.
This, next year, though, this next year should be the loaded year though.
Correct.
At this point.
Right.
Right, because they'll, we'll have their senior class. You, you won't see that after this year.
Correct.
I mean, they'll have an increase, but not a whole class worth of increase.
It just impacts us each year up until next year, and then we'll have our senior class there.
Could I, as relates to that legal fee item, ask Mr. Redbird, this is, this is anticipated for next year. What has been the change in our legal external fees this fiscal year?
I think it's, yeah, I think it is that 100,000 that we're anticipating this year, so we'll have to, we'll be able to budget less next year.
Well, I think, doing some back-of-the-napkin kind of figuring, you know, and annualizing it, I think the, we can, we're possibly looking at a reduction for this year of $300,000 in the legal fees.
Yes, some of that's going to be in TORT and some of that's going to be in Education Fund, so.
So, so the accumulated benefit over two years is $400,000 on an annual basis, right? 300 plus 100.
But split between the funds is the thing.
I don't care where it goes, it's, we're not spending it, that's the point. So, does that, is that clear, is it?
Yeah, we are, we are saving money over what we budget. We, we budgeted this year assuming we would spend less, and, but the way it's trending in the Education Fund, it looks like it's trending about 100,000 less than we've been budgeted this year.
Right.
So we're assuming that same $100,000 savings.
But I'm not comparing it to the budget. I'm comparing last year actual to this year actual, and then the forecast for next year. That's the point.
Right, right.
Okay, thanks.
Then moving on to the, oops, sorry.
I wasn't done with my question.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
I wanted, I wanted clarification on another area you have up here. Could you break out what the elite program represents, number of people?
Okay.
And what, what that number represents?
We had, I want to say, four at one location, we're talking between Harrison and Tree Win. We had four at one location and five individuals at the other. We had, let's see, and then the license fee that goes with that, 60,000.
I'm, I'm sorry?
60,000 for a license fee.
That's not correct, but anyway, okay.
About nine positions plus the 50, $50,000.
I thought it was 50, she said 60, so.
But in previous years, it was 60, it went down to 50,000, but this year, and then you also talk about nine, about nine positions plus the benefits associated with those maps, with several of those positions.
Then moving on to the right-hand column for the staffing, we are looking at two counselors, one dean that retired in the middle of the year, cutting the extra duty pay, Schedule C, looking at 25%. Building monitors, that represents 22, and one family liaison position totaling 698,614 for staff, and.
Where's that one family liaison position?
Where is that, at Valeska?
That's the grant funding position.
For the additional options for reduction, Mark will have some comments on this one as well. What we were looking at there is just wanting to get the numbers of what the Safe School costs, which would be the Greeley piece, as some will know it, and then looking at the Woodruff Contemporary, meaning our own alternative program, and then looking at the Knoxville Center costs. These are not.
Quick question, before you move on, the Safe School, are you saying that we have lost the funding for the Safe School from, from the regional?
That is, that's the, the talk right now is that that would be eliminated, the support. What that is though, is 280,000 approximately of the amount. The rest is something that the unrestricted education fund has been supporting.
And doesn't TORT also support some of that?
TORT, a very small percentage of some of the personnel would, yes. And then the Contemporary, what we're calling our own alternative piece that incorporates in middle school on up through high school, and then the Knoxville Center. None of these would be areas that we want to have to address, but it's just to show that this is the amount of money that is being spent on alternative programs, and I also wanted to point out how closely knit the Safe School is with the Contemporary School, and what I mean by that is how we are being real careful with the staffing where if there's a free period for a teacher, or there's three free periods, that that gets blended with the other alternative so that they're being fully utilized throughout the day, so that the two programs are really close-knit. It's kind of difficult to pull them apart, but we definitely budget them separately and take each individual on how their time is spent so that we have a clear picture of how the money's being spent for those programs.
The Safe School funding reduction was in the governor's budget, so that hasn't, that hasn't, the budget is still in flux at this point. And again, these are ones that were outside of the work of the superintendent's cabinet, and we just, we're looking for other options to get to our, our goal, and, and we listed these there. So that's the end of the Education Fund. We'll jump quickly to our other two funds, Operation and Maintenance and Transportation. This is a summary of the revenues in the Operation and Maintenance Fund, and we have the director is here with us and helped us go through these. Again, we're keeping the rev, as we did with other funds, keeping revenue assumptions level in, in 2016. Other than in Health, Life, Safety, we've got a plug figure in here right now for bond proceeds of $5 million. Our, as we mentioned earlier, we'd been getting by on capital projects funding due to leftover money from the Capital Development Fund, Capital Development Board funding, and that money is, is just about running out, and we've got a list of Health, Life, Safety projects we need to, we're state mandated to complete. We're, we put this number in here, again, as a placeholder, we're cleaning up our list of Health, Life, Safety projects, and by the time we come back in May, we'll have some firmer numbers on Health, Life, Safety projects and, and bond issuances. On the expenditure side.
Again, we kept the expense for both fiscal year 15 and 16 level at the, I should probably switch the slide. At the top is the level, assuming level expenditures, and then below that is staffing reductions, supplies and limiting to get, to get the buildings and grounds, the operation and maintenance budget to a balanced budget. I think we said earlier, currently, the $1 million projected deficit within the Operations and Maintenance Fund as a percentage of revenue is, you know, is actually worse than the Education Fund from that span point, so, and it's got a negative fund balance also, so it has to be reduced. So that, to get it to a balanced budget, we need to eliminate, you know, the 1.3 million, so, and then on the next couple slides, we'll talk about exactly how to do that. And then the, the capital projects, we're going to have to spend less money simply because most of those funds are reduced. We are going to establish a $500,000 contingency fund for emergencies that come up that need to be done, and then, like Mark said, we're going to look at issuing life safety bonds to complete projects that need to be done out of the Health, Life, Safety surveys that we've done over the last year or two that are, have to be done by state mandate.
Could I ask a quick question? When we talk about issuing bonds.
Uh huh.
Because of our, our lower rating with standards and pores, does that mean that we're going to have to pay a lot more interest on the bonds?
No, I, I, our bonds are still rated at A.
Of what?
They're A-rated, so the, they're fairly high-rated bonds, so I, it could have some effect, generally, the state of Illinois, the financial condition of the state of Illinois may have some effect on bond issue costs, but probably not, they're still fairly well-rated bonds.
But we'll have more detail about exactly what we're talking about the, the next time we discuss this and the dollar amount and stuff, so. Next slide here is how, what we're talking about reducing, total staffing reduction. And again, like, like I said, the director of Building and Grounds here, and he did a great job of coming back with options. This is very difficult for him. He's worked really hard to make the, the buildings better and cleaner and everything for, for the students and the staff, and this is going to be a very difficult thing for his department as well as all the other departments that we're talking about. But the staffing reduction would be 17 people to save 910,000. The other adjustment we're talking about is closing one's high school pool. We currently have a pool at Richwood's Manual and at Woodruff that takes daily chemical treatments and supplies and electricity and everything, and so closing one of those would save about $50,000 a year, plus there's other scheduling improvements and overtime and stuff that he, that Buildings and Grounds will be reduced next year to save 1 million, 10,000 from there. On this sheet, we did look at every building, looked at their staffing levels, their number of students, the number of square feet, to come up with the number of reductions. The top part is the individual schools that we're talking about reducing, custodian mostly at those locations, then there's a break, and then there's other positions with both trades and custodians and general maintenance that would be reduced out of that department to save that 910,000. That's the detail of the 17 employees. And that would get the O and M budget back to a balanced budget next year. Again, very difficult decisions, it'd be very difficult to run the department that way, but it's not supportable the way it is today.
Can I have another question?
Sure.
O and M and transportation used to be our most lucrative.
Yeah, I mean.
And so what happened?
Well, transportation, I, I don't know about O and M, I, transportation has been prorated over the last several years because the state looks at it as a very healthy fund in every school district, so they've been prorating the state funding even longer than they've been doing general state aid over the last couple of years, or the last several years, and so, but that's because all. and so, but that's because all school districts had healthy transportation funds. Now, O and M, I think it's just a function of the age of this, of the buildings and how much they cost to run and stuff, I'm sorry.
Okay, because O and M, O and M and transportation, we, we were, some time back, given the permission to move funds-
Right.
-from those funds, so is that part of the problem, because we moved funds, which, when it was in a positive, very good positive?
Yeah, that happened before I started six years ago, so I'm not sure, some of that history.
Oh, I may be dating some of that, okay.
I think one of the challenges in the transportation fund is the inability to hire drivers and keep drivers. When we don't have our own drivers, we have to contract for drivers, and it's much more expensive when we contract for drivers for students, so that's one of the challenges that Josh is addressing continuously, but it's just hard to keep drivers and managers.
I know we haven't gotten to transportation yet.
Well, we're here now.
Okay, but that's one of the problems, and some of the things that have come out, and our strategic plan and all, and, you know, with the community involvement, we talked about neighborhood schools. How well did we look at, are you just basically the dollars and cents kind of people, right? And so, we take this back and look at maybe some of the options to see how-
Well, we're the dollar people, some people are questioning our cents, but-
But my point is, I'm still wondering how, how this actually fits within the whole school scenario, and are there some things that can be done that would offset or eliminate the cuts that we're talking about, like neighborhood schools?
Yeah.
Where, where children were able to walk to school? You know, that's just, you know, so if we did this, then this, you know what I'm saying?
Mr. Wilcoxon?
Sure.
And as we look at the transportation fund, the recent purchases that we made that would affect operations, how will that maybe perhaps change that, I think we said we'll see within four years?
Yeah.
The deficit of that?
Yeah, that was the payback. We should see some operational efficiencies even next year, I mean, we should see lower fuel costs, we should see some additional state reimbursements coming into the fund. So we've actually shown all the expenditures in the revised budget that we'll bring to the board for the additional buses, but, so we're paying those upfront, but we'll see some savings then, starting next year with fuel costs, those kinds of things.
I'm just concerned that we are trying to educate about 14,000 children, and were we thinking about the impact on them when we were looking at, okay, let's, let's think about cutting here, cutting there, cutting, you know, this and that, and how it relates that?
Yes, and that's why we've, for the most part, we've all remained very quiet. This is very alarming for us as educators, but one of the issues, and we've discussed this even at a cabinet level, so many people in our community have spent time spreading the wrong propaganda about different things as opposed to contacting our elected officials at the state level and the national level as it relates to funding. We don't have the funding, and so with, with less funding, we have to do less, although we know the children are going to show up on the, in August, and that we have to continue to educate them. It is very frustrating as the lead of a district, knowing that we have to cut staff and that we don't have the resources we need for our children, so this, these are not easy discussions. Like that slide, you can saw, you saw, and Carla's whispering to Mark, when the slide came about Woodruff, that is so frustrating, because what the community failed to understand is the board made a commitment to support alternative education, but that's one of the programs, when you think about a class size of 15 to one, as opposed to 27 kindergarteners sitting in a classroom, that those are tough decisions they're going to have to make, so we've taken it all into consideration, but we have to also present to you physically responsible recommendations as it relates to being able to make payroll next year.
Yeah, and I understand that, you know, maybe I'm playing devil's advocate or whatever you want. I don't really, I'm, what I'm saying is, have we thought outside the box? If this, then this, I mean, can we do, have we thought outside of the box, and you know, are we continuing to try to do what we always did, instead of whether it worked or not, instead of just looking at, I mean, have we thought outside the box how we could reconstruct and re, you know, reinstitute, if you will? Was that part of the thinking, or it was just that we need 10 teachers and 10 here, and, you know, was, was it part of the thinking?
Yes, ma'am, and that's a good question, and, and my response is, that we also have collective bargaining agreements that we must abide by, and so when we're making decisions, we have to also keep in mind, as I call it all my different colors, the blue book, I have a pink book, I have a gold book, a green book, and when I say that each, each collective bargaining agreement has a color on, on the cover page, the pink book, but we have to look at, every year, we will have those increases based on the steps or the salary increases, so that has to be calculated in, and so we look at that. So we did take that into consideration, but we do have to honor the agreements that we entered into with our employees, whether it was a contract that just was approved for transportation, what, a couple of months ago, one that was approved two years ago, so we have to take all of that into consideration. When you say thinking outside of the box, we do, but we still have to follow those contractual agreements, and we did take it into consideration.
And I think as a board member, what I wanted to see is, what we're seeing tonight, where everything is on the table, and then it's up to us as board members to look at these things, and then have the discussions with staff and ask questions to, what can we do if we need this and we need this? How can we achieve that? I mean, I, and I'm not going to ask them tonight, but in the next few weeks, I anticipate having some very serious discussions, either at committee of the whole or at every board meeting, where I go into this and I'm going to ask questions, how is this going to affect the classroom? How is that going to affect the children? But I think it's important that everything, and that's what I expected, everything is on the table for us to look at, so we know what the cost is, so that we're going to be able to make these decisions that have to be made.
Yeah, I agree with that, as long as we're going to talk about it, but I wanted to know what, what kinds of thinking went into-
And I think-
-coming up with everything.
Right, and I think this will be part of the discussion, Mrs. Ross, as we go forward. I'm going to want to know, okay, you are recommending these cuts, then how is that work going to get done?
Right.
And you're recommending this, so how is that going to work in the classroom or not work in the classroom?
Mainly, it's how is it going to affect the children?
That's exactly right, and I've got some very specific questions I've already got, but I think we need to have some very serious discussions as we move forward, before we make those decisions, and I'm going to have to have answers, you know, discussion with staff to see how we're going to be able to do those things.
And this is why we included the entire cabinet in these discussions, it wasn't just the accounting department or the finance department, it was the entire cabinet that really agonized over a lot of this stuff, so.
So again, we've talked a little bit about this, our two overarching goals for these initial recommendations are to bring projected expenditures in line with the financial resources of the district, and primarily considering state of Illinois and local property taxes, and protect as much as possible direct classroom instruction and student support services. Likely effects, and this is what we've been talking about, there are going to be larger class sizes, there's going to be fewer district employees, there's going to be less professional development for teachers, there's going to be decreases in student support services, fewer textbooks, increases in deferred maintenance, and likely increase in local property taxes for mandated health, life, safety improvements. The list is probably longer than this, and it's, it's not a good list, but again, we've been entrusted with a certain level of resources by the state of Illinois and our local taxpayers, and our challenge is to figure out how to operate a school district within the resources we've been given. So, next steps, again, this is the schedule we talked about earlier, this is, just to restate this again, this is a very initial discussion, preliminary discussion of the fiscal year 2016 budget. We wanted to get these options on the table early, so we can have these kinds of discussions over the next several months, and then come to a consensus on what our budget should be for FY '16. The board acted on reduction in force tonight. In May, we'll bring another report back to the board, and regarding the fiscal year 2016 budget, we can have another discussion then, and a discussion in between now and then. We'll work on compiling grant budgets, again, we'll wait to the, for the conclusion of the general assembly, to see what our actual state funding will be, and then in August, we'll have our preliminary discussion, or preliminary budget to the board, and then for approval in September. As we prepare for our financial future, we'll continue to integrate budget development, financial planning with instructional program planning. We must identify new and current district priorities, and they identified and supported and enhanced, and again, lesser budget priorities, lesser district priorities must be assessed and evaluated for reduction or elimination. I mean, everything we've, everything on this list is important, but in budget development, we do need to identify our highest priorities and fund those priorities, strengthen our priorities, and find a way to reduce or eliminate lesser priorities. And this is, other stuff that we've incorporated tonight, our annual budget planning cycle, we developed much earlier this year, we'll continue to analyze our revenue sources, staffing levels, we'll continue to look at, look at those, and then we also want to make sure that we improve the responsibility for budgetary control and financial management, to make sure it's delegated and assigned to program and area administrators, so they take more responsibility for their actual individual budgets. Advocacy efforts, this is someplace where everybody in the room can help with. Senate Bill One, or formerly Senate Bill 16, revises the general state aid formula. This is a, a good thing for districts like Peoria. It's important, as the superintendent mentioned, for you to contact your legislators and, and let them know you support Senate Bill One. Same for funding of mandated categoricals, we need our elected officials to know that these are important, these are affecting the district when they're not funded, and the state is in need of a statewide capital improvement program, and hopefully, some of that money would flow to local school districts. At the local level, we, at some point, will need to revisit the countywide school facility sales tax to help us accomplish some of our facility improvements, look at increased grant funding, and again, we talked about this, we need to increase funding and take care of our long list of health, life, safety projects.
Just, just real quick on that area, Senate Bill One, the union president, Mr. Atkins Dootrow, made a very good point about us collaborating and jointly working together in this area, I would strongly encourage us to take them up on that in forming a unified effort towards that advocacy.
Okay, and if we have questions or comments tonight, that's great, like I said, I think, I do appreciate getting this presentation this early, I don't think we've ever had this before, so that we can actually have time to have some discussions and around what the priorities are, how we're going to do this, how it's going to affect our children, specifically how it's going to affect the classroom. And as I said, going forward, I think at each meeting or else the committee of the whole, we're going to set aside time to have these discussions, as, because I think as board members absorb all of this, I've got a whole page of notes here, but I know there's going to be more, so I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments they want to make this evening or not, but, Mr. Crawford?
Thank you for the thorough presentation.
Yes, yes, I appreciate it. It was very enlightening, very discouraging, I think alarming was one of the words that was used, but I think in the nine years I've been on the board, this is the first time we've had this, this, this much detail, but also this kind of budget situation in this magnitude facing us, so we're going to have to make some of the really tough decisions this year, and figure out how we're going to do this. Mr. Cloyde?
Thank you, Madam President. Couple things in regard to the staff reduction in force, this is a terrible way to have to do business, and it's simply because the cycle of funding is completely out of sync with our requirement to notify people, and nobody wants to run an organization this way, and it's, it's a creature of the way the schools are funded and the way the legislature operates its budget, so it's awful to have to do it, and I don't think there's any solution to it until we have a different approach to funding in Springfield. Second, we've had a great deal of time and community input on strategic planning, but at the end of the day, the priorities that are set here really are going to set, to a great extent, what the strategic plan really is. And through those meetings, I heard very few people ask for less, and I don't recall anyone asking for a tax increase, so those are two things that we have to keep in mind, but there's a reality here, and that is, we cannot continue to fund programs and staff that we cannot afford. The state of Illinois has continued to behave in a manner which is so grossly irresponsible it's hard to believe, but they, they don't fund what they ask us to do, they don't fund the mandates that require to do, for example, just this discussion on bullying, think about the time that that's going to take, not dollar one from Springfield to do what they are requiring us to do as a matter of state law. Couple other things, I worked for a business some time ago that faced some fairly significant financial pressures, and I was in management, and I will tell you that I took a 17% cut in compensation, and part of my benefits were cut too, and I think we need to take a look at that across the board from an administrative standpoint. And I know that will be very unpalatable, but that's the way you survive as an organization, if everybody buys in. Another thing we need to think about is outsourcing functions, which we cannot do ourselves as economically as others, and that is also unpalatable, but it's reality. Another thing is city TIF districts. We have a potential very, very substantial capital investment in the city, and the incremental value of those taxes would be withheld from the district and other taxing bodies for 23 years under the TIF district law, and that is just a shame that that happens to act that way. And then the final question is, if we're talking about making staff cuts in the budget for '15, '16, and we don't see the final budget and approve it until September 28th, how do we get those two things in that sequence? How do you, how do you cut a budget, and how do you make commitments to people to work for the '15, '16 school year, when you haven't decided what the budget is until the 28th of September after school has already started? So, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I, and, and we don't have to wait until September 28th to make all those decisions. I mean, personally, and this comes under, I want to talk, speak to the redor, reduction in force, unfortunately, it's something we have to do every year, and I think we try to do as few as we can every year, especially this year with the cuts we may have to make, we need some flexibility, but the one thing, as a board member, and I think that this administration has tried to do this, we need, we need to make some of these budget decisions as quickly as possible, because we need to be able to bring those staff back as quickly as possible. We can't wait until July and August to bring any of the staff back that we're going to be able to recall, because it's not fair to them, it's not fair to us, it's not fair to the schools that they're, they're going to, so we have to make these budget decisions, some of them long before September. September, we have to wait until we see what the state's going to do, basically, and so we need to make some of these, I think we've, I talked to Mr. Wilcoxon tonight, and we've got until, probably, we need to start making some hard decisions by sometime in May, especially regarding staff, because we can't, we can't leave these people hanging, it's not fair, and we need to bring back as many as we can. Mr. Wilcoxon?
Sure. Again, as I see this process unfolding, we're going to come back, we're going to have discussions now until we come back with, to the board in May. One of the challenges we're going to run into, again, is the general assembly won't be done in May.
Right.
They, they may not be done, and who knows this year, but, and after they do pass appropriations, then they have, the state board has to go through and churn out their calculations of what this actually means for districts. So we'll have a flavor of where the general assembly is going in May, and we could start making general budget decisions then, but, you know, you never know what's going to happen in Springfield, as I said before. happen in Springfield, as I said before, and we still have to do some waiting to see what the actual state grants are going to be. But hopefully, we can continue this discussion about priorities and budgets from now until May, and maybe zero in on a lot of these decisions by May. That's, that's how we saw this process unfolding.
Okay. Sure.
September is just kind of the drop dead date that we have to submit our budget, that doesn't mean...
Well, it's when we need to submit the budget, but the fiscal year starts July 1st, so...
Right, but I'm saying...
You're operating the first quarter without an adopted budget, so in my view, you need to make these budget decisions...
Well, that's, that was my point. We don't have to wait until September.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda tonight. It consists of gifts to the school district, the proposed action is that the following donations be accepted in letters of appreciation sent to donors tonight. We have TV streaming device valued at $120 by Donors Choose. We have payment of bills. Number three is the Human Resources Report. The proposed action is the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of an employee, payment for travel. Five is field trip approval. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the field trip for Washington 7th and 8th grade students to travel to St. Louis, Missouri to tour St. Louis City Museum on May 19th, 2015, per Board Policy 6:240. This end of school year trip supports course standards and objectives for 7th and 8th grade students. The cost to students is $15, but no student will be denied attendance due to inability to pay. Number six is field trip approval. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the field trip for Richwoods IB students to travel to Six Flags St. Louis, Missouri on April 24th, 2015, per Board Policy 6:240. Students will be participating in the Physics Day, putting the laws of physics to the test with an attraction-centric course. Cost to students is $20, but no student will be denied attendance due to inability to pay. Field trip approval. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the field trip for Washington Student Council students to attend the Illinois Association of Junior High Student Council Convention in Springfield, Illinois on April 17th and 18th, 2015. There is no cost to students for this trip. Number eight is the IHSA membership. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the renewal of membership in the Illinois High School Association for Manual Academy, Peoria High School, and Richwoods High School, and agree to adopt and abide by the Constitution, bylaws, terms and conditions, and administrative procedures, guidelines, and policies of the Illinois High School Association for the year July 1st, 2015, through June 30th, 2016. Number nine is the approval of selected vendors for E-Rate contracts. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the selection of the following vendors for contracts based on the recent request for proposal period following USAC E-Rate guidelines. The vendors have been chosen based on a scoring system with price as the highest weighted factor. Contract must be completed, signed, and submitted to USAC by April 16th, 2015. WAN data, data and Internet services, local and long-distance phone service, the vendor is Windstream. Cellular phone service, the vendor is US Cellular. Network firewall appliance, the vendor is Clifton Larson Allen. LAN switches, WLAN controller, Wi-Fi network upgrade, the vendor is Midwest Communications. Number 10 is the Richwoods High School Auditorium Seat Fundraiser. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve Richwoods High School to conduct a fundraiser to raise private dollars in the amount of $240,000 for replacement seating for the RHS auditorium. The funds will be used to purchase and install 1,200-plus seats. Number 11 is Board Policy 7:70. The proposed action is that the Board of Education waive the first reading and approve the changes made to Board Policy 7:70 as presented. Are there any items that a board member wants pulled for a separate vote? Could I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Items that you want to comment on?
Yes, please.
Dr. Lathan?
All right. In looking at the approval of selected vendors for E-Rate contracts, I'd like to read out the amounts for those vendors that were selected, please. Windstream, the amount, estimated cost per month is $5,880 after the district receives our E-Rate reimbursement. For US Cellular, it will be an estimated $80,000 annual bill after the E-Rate reimbursement. Clifton Larson Allen, estimated $12,223 one-time cost to the district after the E-Rate reimbursement. For Midwest Communications, $495,506.50 one-time price for 153 new Cisco switches plus one Cisco router, that includes the installation. Then also an estimated, oh, estimated after the E-Rate reimbursement is $74,326.
Could somebody please speak to what the E-Rate is and what the rebate is?
Yes, Michelle, Mrs. Seifel.
Good evening.
Did I hit all of them? Did I?
Yes, yes, I believe you did. Good after, good evening. Every year, we, the district applies for E-Rate reimbursement funding. Every time that someone pays their phone bill, there's a universal service charge that goes to the federal government. The federal government then lets schools and libraries apply for that funding, which is what we have done every year.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted that out there, so we know what that is, okay? And you, yeah, and could somebody speak to Board Policy 7:70 and let us know what that is specifically? Mr. Cloyde?
Yes. Policy 770, it's an addition of one sentence, which says that students who are on suspension will not be counted among the annual data for chronic truance, is that correct? This does not mean that there's, that those, those aren't counted in terms of, they're suspended, but we are, I think, unique among school districts, or very few that report that as the same number. And we talked about that last time. The point here is that we're trying to make sure that reflects accurately the truancy issue, and if you are in suspension, you are not allowed to come to school. Therefore, your not being there is not a matter of your choice.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
No, I just said, thank you.
Oh.
I did bring that, I said, we were contributing to the truancy by doing that, so thanks for doing that.
So that, this corrects it. I assume that's the, the annual statistic that we will report then at the end of the year.
Any other comments on that? Any other questions or comments to board members?
Just asking for approval to go back and make that retroactive for this school year, that it will not count into our truancy calculation. Just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? We talked about the, the Richwoods Seat Fundraiser at the last meeting, and otherwise, it's the field trips, and the IHSA is something we do every year, so. Would you call the roll?
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Aye.
Bring us to the deliberation agenda, we'll start with discipline.
Review of suspensions. Proposed action, that the review of suspensions listed on the report dated March 23rd, 2015 be approved as presented. Second.
Would you call the roll?
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 13, revocation of board probation. Proposed action, that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated March 23rd, 2015, be approved as presented. Second.
Would you call the roll?
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Six I's on abstain.
Item 20 is the non-reemployment of part-time educational support employees. The proposed action is the Board of Education authorize the non-reemployment of the part-time educational support personnel employees named herein for the 2015-2016 school term pursuant to Section 10-23.5 of the School Code 105 ILCS 5/10-23.5. Could I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Did you have, are there questions on this one?
I do have a question. I'm kind of confused, because in the proposed cuts, this was one of the items I thought, I thought we were supposed to be looking at. Hasn't been decided yet. These are the, is this list composed of, of the monitors?
All, all part-time employees.
But I thought that, but the presentation was that we were going to be looking at.
That was why the comment is, what I said, when we look at staff, our staff members
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Hastic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Item 20 is the non-reemployment of part-time educational support employees, the proposed
action is that the Board of Education authorize the non-reemployment of the part-time educational support personnel employees named herein for the 2015-2016 school term pursuant to section 10-23.5 of the school code 105 ILCS 5/10-23.5. Could I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Did you have, are there questions on this one?
I did have a question. I'm kind of confused, because in the proposed cuts, this was one of the items I thought, I thought we were supposed to be looking at. Hasn't been decided yet. These are the, is this list composed of, of the monitors?
Mm-hmm. It is all, all part-time employees.
But I thought that, but the presentation was that we were going to be looking at.
That was what I'd come in, Mrs. Wolfmeyer, said, when we look at staff, our staff members, that we need to bring back, we need to make decisions, but we've always recommend, made the recommendations for all of the groups, that we were looking for a reduction.
This says non-reemployment of...
Right, I mean, and that's how it's worded when we, that's always how it's worded.
We can still bring part or all of these people back.
But I understand that, but, but why are they listed on the proposed budget cuts if we've already decided?
But the teachers are also listed, which were items numbered 18, 19. All the staff that are being proposed for our reductions in force are listed in the recommendations that were presented tonight, but they're also part of the agenda, as far as the recommendations for eliminations or reductions.
Because we're required by law to give them so much notice, so we can't wait until we make a decision in May. If we decide not to cut building monitors, then I would assume they would all be brought back.
Okay.
Any other questions? Would you call the roll?
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Hastic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Item 22 is approval of a resignation agreement and general release of claims for Dorothy
Chalk. The proposed action is a motion to accept the resignation of Dorothy Chalk pursuant to the resignation agreement and general release of claims as presented. Major terms of resignation agreement include the following, Dorothy Chalk's resignation is effective March 9th, 2015, and two, in consideration of Ms. Chalk's resignation from employment and a general release of all claims, the board shall provide a lump sum payment of $500 to be made within 10 calendar days of the effective date of the agreement. Could I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Would you call the roll?
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Hastic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we have any presentations or suggestions from board members this evening? Mr. Crawford?
Fellow board members, we had a discussion not too long ago about historical designation for Peoria High. Does anybody feel as if they need more information on that? I was gonna maybe suggest that Mr. Redberg, at the next board meeting, present us with kind of a pros and cons evaluation, particularly from a legal standpoint, if we were to make such an adoption of a historical site. I can't recall the specific names of each designation, but basically, we'd be looking at a local designation, and then, of course, there are other designations which seem to become more restrictive as you go up the levels with the state designation and the National Historic Register of, or Nat-, the Register of Historic Places. So, I don't know if anybody wants any other direction on that, but I thought we'd kind of bring that conversation full circle and try to get a, put some finality to that at our next board meeting, if, if that's a possibility.
Do you mind if I say, while you're thinking about bringing back the information, what would be the impact of some of the plans that we have for the building?
Yes.
Exactly.
Outside of the building, right.
Yeah, think about, think about the things that you could envision well into the future for a place like Peoria High, or for that matter, any one of our district buildings, and ask yourself whether that, was it, whether a designation like that, will either enhance or hinder.
I mean, you know, are there any restrictions?
Right.
Instant cell towers and that kind of thing?
Right.
Now, I, that's what I'm concerned about, is what restrictions it might place on us, and also the fact that if you get that designation, I may be wrong, but if you could check into this, I believe that decisions like that come out of our hands and go into the hands of, of the historical committee.
Right.
So, that's another thing we need to take into consideration.
I'm spending money already.
Yeah.
Terrific.